...and two hundred followers who worship the stand, one nation under God, indivisible, your living and dead.
Bisco.
President.
Philippi.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Kenders.
Here.
Knorr.
Here.
Nogi.
Excused.
Avache.
Excused.
Ulander.
Excused.
Eustacek.
Here.
I need a motion for temporary president.
I'll make a motion to appoint Steve Kenders.
Motion by Philippi, second.
One second.
Second by Knorr. Any other motions to temporary president? Motion carried. The list of elected and qualified school directors of the Yawk School District can make these part of the minutes of the meeting as follows. Ruth Bisco, December 2027. Jared Philippi, December 2025. Matt Gardner, December 2025. Stephen Kenders, December 2027. Linda Knorr, December 2025. Greg Nogi, December 2027. Al Rodcheck, December 2027. Amy Ulander, December 2027. Monica Eustacek, December 2025. I need a nomination for president.
I'll nominate Jared Philippi.
Nomination for Jared Philippi. I get a second.
Knorr.
Second by Knorr. Do we have any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to close nomination for president. Nomination for vice president. Now we need a nomination for vice president. Could I have a nomination for vice president's one? Oh. Oh. Jared, take it.
Mr. Kenders, great job last year as board president. Thank you for all the time you served the district last year.
Thanks, Jared.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to nominate Matt Gardner for vice president.
I need a second.
Eustacek.
Eustacek. Any other nominations for vice president? I make a motion to close nominations.
Move Bisco.
Motion by Bisco, second.
Kenders.
Second by Kenders. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to cast unanimous vote for Matt Gardner for vice president for the Yawk School Board to serve to the reorg meeting of December 2025. I need a motion.
Move Bisco.
Motion by Bisco, second.
Kenders.
Second by Kenders. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I need a nomination for treasurer for the board for 2025.
I nominate Monica Eustacek.
I need a second.
Kenders.
Second by Kenders. Any other nominations? I need a motion to close nominations.
Kenders.
Motion by Kenders, second.
Gardner.
Gardner. Motion to cast unanimous vote for Monica Eustacesk for treasurer of the Yawk School Board for 2025.
Gardner.
Motion by Gardner, second.
Bisco.
Bisco, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion. I need a motion to serve as secretary of the Yawk School Board for December 2025.
Nominate Linda Knorr.
I need a second.
Eustacek.
Second by Monica. Any other nominations? I need a motion to close nominations.
Gardner.
Motion by Gardner, second.
Kenders.
Second by Kenders. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to cast the Knorr as secretary of the Yawk School Board to serve until the reorg meeting December 25. Need a motion.
Eustacek.
Motion by Eustacesk, second.
Gardner.
Second by Gardner. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. President shall make all the appointments to the following committees. I believe, let's see. Recommend the Board of Soup Education appoint Didero, Matta, and Cambest as the Yawk School Board solicitor. Motion.
Kenders.
Motion by Kenders, the second.
Gardner.
Second by Gardner. Any board questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Did I miss one? Sorry, I missed one. The Board of Education shall set its workshop regular meetings of the Yawk School Board at 6:30 in the large group instruction room at the Yawk Senior High on the following dates: January 14th, 2025; February 11th; March 11th; April 8th; May 6th; June 10th; August 5th; September 9th; October 7th; November 11th; December 3rd. This is the first Wednesday in December reorg meeting at 6:00 PM at the LGIU Room at Yawk High School. I need a motion.
Eustacek.
Motion by Monica, second.
Knorr.
Second by Knorr. Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Oh, yeah. I got that one. Recommend the Board of Education appoint a Tribune Review as the Yawk School District newspaper of record. Motion.
Kenders.
Second by, motion by Kenders, second.
Knorr.
Second by Knorr. Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:27 PM.
Gardner.
Motion by Gardner, second.
Knorr.
Knorr. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Steve, was that close? Are we just going to roll one?
Yeah, I think we'll just keep it 6:30. Okay. Figured out now that I'm officially obese. That's why I'm drinking water, and it's killing me.
Bisco. President. Philippi.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Kenders.
Here.
Knorr. Here. Nogi.
Excused.
Avache.
Excused.
Ulander.
Excused.
Eustacek. Here.
Public comment on agenda items only. There's no comment from student representatives.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to start off with Stephen Capsule. We just finished our Joy Book fundraiser, and we will be having school members dressing as elves and visiting elementary schools next week on the 11th and 13th. And they are also planning and organizing the annual talent show on the 19th. CAPSAD is volunteering overlies three nights this year, the November 23rd, December 6th, and December 14th. They've had forty kids in total over three nights, and they're also just started Toys for Tots collection today, which runs through next week. National Art Society is in the process of delivering their holiday fundraisers, ponchos, wreaths, and Christmas cactuses, and also will help toy bagging for Toys for Tots on the 19th. FBLA, they're testing in their events, and winners who advance to the state competition will be announced at the regional competition on the 17th. They collected twenty-three Operation Christmas Child Bonuses to be sent to underprivileged kids in their both countries, and also collected a hundred dollars in charity donations, and they are sponsoring the Twelve Days of Christmas spirit days leading up to break. Senior mentoring, just finished their fourth week of mentoring, and worked on self-reflection as well as strength and weaknesses with the freshmen. National Art Honor Society has recently painted windows in both Hermenee and West Newton for their light-up nights, and they will be painting children faces, children's faces at Hermenee's light-up night this Saturday. And they also have announced their new officers for the year, President Dakota Waywood, Vice President Christian Harzberger, Treasurer Joel McCullen, and Secretary Sydney Sharpe. The future is mine. The leadership conference tomorrow, Mr. DiMara, Mr. Philippi, Dr. Lars Neese, and Mr. Sutherland will be panel speakers, and they are also hosting the Transition College Event December 18th, where 2024 Yawk grads come back and share their experiences with transitioning from high school to college life. And then finally, Triumph Music Society, students have recently auditioned and interviewed to join Triumph, and they now have fourteen total members. Students are now preparing for what activities they will help with for the rest of the year. So I'd like to leave.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to the following students for being selected as the number students of the month at Western Elementary. Henry Kapanek, Ricky Lochner, Riley Dunn, Paige Peterson, Emerson Knessh, Luca Viznani, Sam Martin, Harper Johnson, Dia Shabai, and Reed Bizarro. Congratulations to the following students for being selected as Amendment Elementary Superstudents of the Month for November. Michaela Albright, Heidi Long, Ella Roro, Prashadik, Barack Matola, Mason Hutchison, Bradley Gardner, Macy Watkins, Paisley Gethardt, Oliver Trias, Riley Botina, Erin Smith, and Lila Stoll. Congratulations for receiving numerous H.W. Good Elementary R3 Awards for the month of November. Hunter Smith, Ryan Curtie, and Athena Badris. And congratulations to the following teachers for receiving donor choose grants. That's Ken Mance, Crystal Firmstone, Crystal Donaldson, Marjorie Ramondo, Abigail Well, Sarah Zora, Dawn Mitchell, Lauren Jager, and Elise Azlar. Congratulations to the following football teams for being members of the 3A Interstate Football Hall Carpentage Team, Raven Corretta, Colin Casper, Sam Smallish, Aiden Schaefer, Ryan Sarver, Jayden Dixon, Rensel, Aiden Hemenic. Congratulations to the following students for being selected as the number of the students of the month. Madeline Collins, Julie Schuber, Jordan McNabb, Samuel Smallish, Isabel Sedgwick, Adori Upwell-Bier. Congratulations to the following students for being selected as Gems Coopers of the Month for November. Mallory Sutton, Nick Dorazo, Lainey Smith, Alan Standrum, Breckler Hoffman, Casey Waywood, Trinity Pollack, and Ellie Navita. Under information, there is none. Under presentations, there is none. And we go to Budget, Budget and Finance, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. DiMara. Under Budget and Finance, we have three items. Approve the board minutes, approve the treasurer's report, and approve the general funds for payment. I need a motion.
Gardner.
Motion by Gardner, second.
Bisco.
Second by Bisco. Any board comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Secretaries' report.
Executive session was held on the following date, Wednesday, December 4th, 2024, before the meeting for personnel litigation.
I need a motion to accept the secretary's report.
Remove Bisco.
Motion by Bisco, second.
Eustacek.
Second by Eustacesk. Any board questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Nothing under professional employees, nothing under classified employees, athletic activity. Three items. Approve the following individual to be added to the list. Dustin Schoeff. Approve the hiring of the following coaches. Casey Teagarden, Adam Snyder, Aiden McLaughlin. Approve the transfer of Brad Brahman from Volunteer Girls Varsity Basketball to Girls Assistant Varsity Basketball. I need a motion.
Eustacek.
Motion by Eustacesk, second.
Kenders.
Second by Kenders. Any board questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. District operations, two motions. Motion to approve paying the bills up to December 31st. Motion to award combi oven replacement project to TriMark SF Kemp for seventeen thousand two seventy. Motion.
Knorr.
Motion by Knorr, a second.
By Bisco.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. YEA report. No union rep. Foundation of Yawk Helping Hands on Tuesday, November 26th handed out prepackaged Thanksgiving meals to families and community members in need. We also want to thank Rodney's for preparing the meals, Country Custard for providing the pie, the pies. Anybody else, Linda?
Um...
Latario for the pop and all the...
The rolls. It was the carrot and the porks and peppers one.
Yeah, the gentleman from Pepper Farm.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. We want to thank him. Thank everybody from the staff that came out, everybody from Helping Hands to make that a success again. Anything under old business? New business? Solicitors' report?
I think you're right.
Citizens' comments? Motion to adjourn. Time is 6:36. Gardner, motion by Gardner, second.
Knorr.
Knorr. Questions? Comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.